Okay, let's call this to order. It is 6:37. Do we have an invocation this evening? Brittany Youngquist? Excellent. Step forward. All stand please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for just the opportunity to live in this beautiful city, Lord, and you've blessed it in so many ways. We thank you for this opportunity to come together tonight, Lord, and we ask you for fruitful conversation, Lord. We ask you for unity, Lord, hearts and minds, Lord, that would be open to understanding and listening, Lord, that there would just be good conversation and that you would be honored and glorified through everything that takes place in this room this evening, God. We thank you so much for our first responders in this community, God. We thank you for our firefighters, our police officers, Lord, our EMTs, paramedics, there are so many, Lord, who just jump into action the moment we need them in so many different ways, Lord, and we are so thankful for their bravery, for their selflessness, for their sacrifice, Lord, and just reflecting on what our local community went through with the fires and the Holy Fire, Lord, and just seeing the way the community rallied and just supported one another, Lord, we just, we thank you so much for that, Lord, and just being able to lean on one another and encourage one another and just be the community, Lord, that you have called us to be. We also pray for our country this evening, God, and it's so often we are just reminded of everything that we disagree upon, Lord, and so I pray for each one of us here, God, that we would just be reminded that there are so many things that unite us, Lord, even with those that we may disagree with, Lord, that we would be reminded of the things that bring us together and not the things that tear us apart, God. We ask for your continued hand of blessing over this community, Lord, and the surrounding areas, and we are just very grateful that this is the place that we get to call home. It's in your son's precious name that we pray. Amen.
Remains here. Jack, would you give this please?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, a free, public, or which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, please? Councilmember Monner.
Here.
Councilmember Aaron Crams. Councilmember Hagerty. Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Here.
And Mayor Warren. Here. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Can I get a motion to approve? Or halter?
I'm moving.
Second?
I'll make a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five to zero.
Yes. My computer might be on and off.
Oh, okay. Do you have a comment on the minutes?
Yes, John Zeitz, 30279, Clearwater Drive, Canyon Lake, California, 92587. Just a question, why it was taken out of the consent agenda and put here? Plus, I had a question on it.
What was taken out? Was something taken out of the consent agenda?
What you were doing is you were removing the agenda. The minutes are part of the consent calendar.
I'm so sorry. That was my mistake. We will redo the motion.
Well, just the same time then, when it comes to the consent calendar, I want to pull over minutes. Thanks.
Okay. So my mistake, quite correct. Thank you. We were approving the agenda, not the minutes. I was moving ahead, so let's try that again. Shall we do have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Approve them.
Yes. Second?
Second.
I see all in favor, please.
Aye.
All in favor. Thank you. So let's move next to our special, our special proclamation. So tonight is a really great night. Just to give you a little idea of why we're here, we've had a lot of negative impact lately on our little communities around here. The Holy Jim Fire was devastating and is going to wreak a little more havoc as we have strong rains. Our first responders that came to the aid were not our only heroes. We had community heroes also, and so tonight we'd like to honor all of those people for stepping up and doing everything that they could to help our community, to help the communities around us. And so without further ado, let's get it started.
I would like to have the mayor, just real quick, the first one on there is the council announcements first before we get to the minutes.
Favor of Congress? Actually, I was gonna move that.
You want to move those?
I'm sorry, Matt. But we have, if you don't mind.
I wanted to make sure.
So you understand why we're doing that? Our first responders are here, and they've got to be at the ready to leave us, and I don't want them to leave us when we're not ready. So are we good? Okay. So if I could have Station 60 and Station 94, please come up. Captain Roberts. Chief Carter. And what we do at the city level, it pales in comparison to what these fine people do for us, and I wanted to say thank you, not just from the city of Canyon Lake, but I also asked Mayor Blake Elton to be here tonight. She was not able to be because she is also basically on call and standing ready to face any drop of rain that we've been promised actually happens to hit the ground. So we have to instead say thank you on her behalf, and so I'm going to do that also. I promise I have a good hug. She appreciates everything. We appreciate everything.
Thank you.
I just wonder what you've done. Keep that from me. And Mayor Johnson. I guess, yeah. Sorry about that. I have a little. Thank you all very much. It's not just from us, and I have a little plaque back there, but we have a long list of other people that would also like to thank you. So I think if it's okay, we'll do this in succession. So Brenda with Congressman Ken Carleton's office.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Deadstead, and I'm here tonight on behalf of our congressman. Thank you very much to the other mayor, councilmembers, distinguished guests. Appreciate you asking for our attendance tonight. It is certainly a congressman's pleasure to present you guys with a certificate of appreciation for your outstanding service to this community and to all of the members that you've helped and the cooperative efforts that you guys did in surrounding communities in the Holy Fire. So we certainly appreciate that. On myself, I am a CDF brat. So that goes way back. My dad was a thirty-something-year man when he retired from CDF, which used to be and what is now called CalFire. It used to be called California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, and so I go way back. So I am absolutely. So on behalf of the congressman, it is my honor to present you guys with a certificate of appreciation for your outstanding service. Thank you so much.
I'd like to introduce Jeff with come with Senator, almost, Senator Jeff Stones' office, and I didn't make you do this, but I'm gonna make you go up to the microphone, please when you speak, so that you are going to be there too.
Good evening, everyone, and prior to the firefighters, first responders. I don't believe that there are words that are efficient to say how we all feel of the work that you have done in the past. Thank you will have to suffice tonight, but the senator would like to let you know that as your senator, I wanted to thank you for being key players and assistance of helping those affected by the Holy Fire. Your support in the community has not gone unnoticed and is so appreciated. Thank you very much from the senator, and again, thank you for all the work that you have done. Thank you.
Assemblymember.
Hi, I'm a assembly member, Melendez's office, and I'm sure you guys hear, thank you all the time, but I mean, there's no words I can describe what you've done for this community or the state as a whole, and my heart just races thinking about what could have happened tonight through rain, what might still happen, and I just can't, I think you're like you said, with words enough that you've done for this community, for the state as a whole once again. So on behalf of Assemblywoman Melissa Melendez, I'm the 67th district, I'd like to present you with a certificate of outstanding service.
I've had this say grilled several times tonight since still. Also now, we have Jeff with Riverside County Supervisor, Captain Jeffrey's office.
Thank you. First of all, I'm glad that we're all able to be here tonight instead of out in the mud. I came dressed for mud this morning afraid that we might be back out. I know that CalFire went straight from firefighting to flood prep and has been instrumental in helping us in this next phase, even as they were instrumental in stopping the spread of the last phase. So the help that we've gotten from our locals as well as from the state agency has been terrific. Supervisor Jeffrey has spent thirty years as a volunteer firefighter, fought some wildfires in the same places that we just had burned this time, and so he, as much as anyone knows how much of work that is and what goes into it and how important that job is. So on behalf of Supervisor Jeffrey's, we also have a certificate from the county for the stations or the agency. Thank you.
You've been here. Isn't it beautiful? Moving from the city of Canyon Lake, we've got a plaque, a little certificate in a frame. It's welded in there, so don't think of putting any others. Yes, absolutely, and before everybody goes. Can we make sure? Yeah. So Jeff, you want to give this one?
Yeah.
Okay, look here. When I say three, don't blink. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you, guys. Before we let our firefighters go, there is one sad note. One of our favorites is leaving Station 94, and we'll miss him very greatly. He's been a strong, strong voice of our community. He's been irreplaceable, is how we feel. So with that, we want to say thank you to Captain Jeff Roberts and his certificate also. The city of Canyon Lake cannot tell you what you've done for us. You are my fire station. I'm not too far from you, so I say, on behalf of the city, thank you very much for all that you've done. Good luck in what you're doing.
Thank you.
Enjoy your family life.
I'm humbled, so thank you very much.
If you'd like to say something, we was going to be here for you. Tell us where you're going, Jeff. Are you going, Jeff?
I'm very humbled. I wasn't expecting this, but so you know, I've been here at Fire Station 94 for the last nine years. I'm also a Canyon Lake resident. I transferred here for Verena Valley, and position opened up in our training division, and they wanted me to go in there and start, start a new training bureau and help train the new kids and some of the specialty, extra, special rescue stuff that we're gonna go into, such as like the floods and fires, that we do something above and beyond, so I'll have extra tools, and I'll be in charge of kind of heading that program of special rescues and trench rescues, confined space, and so that's gonna be my new job. And I'm kind of more getting off the fire engine for a little bit. I've been on twenty-six years, so my body's gonna take a little bit of a break and probably use my brain a little bit better. I just want to say thank you, and I really appreciate it, and I love Canyon Lake, and I continue to be here, and I'll see you guys absolutely out and around, just not in uniforms.
Next up, if we could bring our animal friends of the valley up, please. We filled the room with uniforms. Neil thought he was gonna hide in the back. That's what happened.
I get you. You would take good shots.
Okay, I'm going to let Neil give us a little more detail than I can, but what animal friends have done for the community, we're all aware of. What happened during the Holy Jim Fire was nothing short of a miracle. They brought in animals that couldn't go anywhere else, and they made sure that those animals went back where they belonged. And in addition, at the same time, they had, was it eighty adopted out? Eighty-four, yes, sorry. Eighty-four, even more amazing, at the same time, so they completed their regular mission, which is to get homes and animals into loving homes, at the same time they were working under such extreme emergency operations. So I want to say on behalf of the city of Canyon Lake first, you are amazing, and the things that you do for our county and for our people that support your shelter is nothing short of incredible. So thank you all very much. I will have a plaque for you. We have other people waiting in line, but I'd like to be the one to shake hands first. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna have you step up here.
Sure.
And sure, Neil, sort.
That's a challenge, offering a microphone to a man from England. We could be here forever. I'm sorry, guys, for my back, but my back. It was a tremendous event for us. We generally take in about two-hundred-and-fifty animals a week, thirteen thousand a year, and then suddenly the fire erupted, and we weren't prepared, to be honest. We know there's a fire season in December, but of course, this was an arson attack, so it caught us a little bit unawares, and within a period of thirty-six hours with the mandatory evacuations, we had accommodated one-hundred-and-seventy-one animals. People were just dropping their animals and running, and in fact, even four of our members of staff had to go home to their homes, rescue pets, have the mandatory evacuation, but still came back to the shelter to help. So they were working right the way through the night. We worked nonstop for about two days. I just took lots of coffee breaks, but everybody else was doing the work. These folk here are a mere portion of the support from the shelter, a lot of folks behind the scenes that gave a lot of time and effort, but the community was fantastic. They, within hours, we were having loads of food, donated blankets, even folk coming in with pizza and coffee to keep the staff going. So thank you all so much to the community, and a personal thanks to the team here. They awesome. I was very, very awed and inspired by their commitment, their compassion, and their efforts to help animals and the community in this, in this community here. Thank you.
Thank you. It's time to give the mic, so.
I don't need a mic. Who can't hear me? I'm pretty sure everybody can hear me, so. On behalf of the congressman, it is certainly my pleasure to be here tonight for you guys. You, in my opinion, are the unsung heroes because you take care of those family members, right? Those family members who do not hold the voice and are often overlooked. Not in my family because they sleep with me in bed, or the dog, because those are my family. I'm a empty nester this year, and so I go home to my little guys. So the service that you provide is immensely appreciated by folks like me and folks like this that needed you, that absolutely legitimately needed you for their time of need to take care of their family members when they had no other options. So God bless you for the work that you do every single day to take care of those families. We really appreciate it. On behalf of the congressman, we are gonna present you always the certificate of this appreciation for this dedication. Thank you.
What Brenda said, I, you know, because I'm a owner of animal as well, my wife and I, we don't know what we would do without ours. It's a small dog, but the point of it is, is that it's a member of the family, and there's too many times when there's a fire and people have to get out, they don't know what to do with their animals. The service that you provide is just amazing, and without it, there would be so many members of families that would be lost. And we thank you, and the senator thanks you as well, and for all the great work that you have done, and there's nothing that would replace what you do. Thank you.
So once again, Aleisha from Assemblywoman Melendez's office, and I think, I think a large statistic just recently, I think seventy percent of homeowners have pets. Is that something around that? That's just blows my mind. I mean, it doesn't because I have like three dogs and one cat, but once again, I just can't imagine those animals not having homes, and the fact that you guys were able to find, get some of them adopted was, I didn't know that fact until, until I came here right now, I mean, that's just amazing to me. So on behalf of the Assemblywoman and the 67th district, I sent you with the certificate of outstanding service.
And on behalf of Supervisor Jeffrey's, we also wanted to thank you for your service during the fire, the level of coordination it took to take all those extra animals, how we know that you weren't, you had to work very closely with our county animal services, which isn't always easy. And we heard, I mean, without, without the safe and secure place where people leave their pets, I know there were people that wouldn't have left at all if it meant they didn't have a place for their animals, so. And we heard and saw stories online afterwards about staff members taking pictures daily of people's dogs and texting them so that they knew their dogs were doing okay, and that's, that's a special touch that I know has a lot of people. So on behalf of Supervisor Jeffrey's, I also thank you for all you did. This is again the certificate from the city of Canyon Lake to show our appreciation. If you could do me a favor, very quickly, list their names for us, so that everybody here sees the faces and the names of the people that you have here tonight supporting.
Excellent. Yeah, I'm gonna go this way. Sergeant Jan.
Ratten.
Officer James Newgar. Officer Trevor Dugan. Officer Michael.
See how that happened?
Michael Nonahopper. Officer David Dawson. This is our category coordinator, Shelley.
We just call people by first names. Cat lady is what she's called. This is the second cat lady.
This is our other cat lady, Debbie Kelly, and boy, these guys just picked them up. They are the highest stakes people, these guys. Well, these guys, well, these guys, and these guys. This is, you could introduce yourself.
And Crystal Lawrence, her admin, the department of organizing all the food intakes, and not to, oh, I have to be ignore you, Katie, manager of social media, who was posting lots of information about rescued animals and where people would come to drop animals off when they would be evacuated, so.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you. Okay, so we had, we have not only, I mentioned our, we all met, our firefighter heroes, which I also forgot to mention that in the beginning, not only did they take care of the Holy Jim Problem, we had a small fire break up first weekend of September, I think it was, February weekend, and it was dealt with like that, another wildfire threatening Canyon Lake was taken care of. Quickly, quickly, I'm rushing, thank you for that. Okay, so we also have some local heroes that helped us. I want Adam McNaughton to come up, please. You too, I know that you were there too the entire time. Let's not forget. So I will speak into the microphone for this. The people behind me stood up when they certainly didn't need to, and in fact, Hell's Kitchen staff stayed in place when they were told to leave for their safety. They refused, they stayed, they took care of our firefighters in spite of the danger. They took care of them until the danger had passed and they were allowed to finally go home and rest. There were clots, the mounds of eggs, you wouldn't believe, there were, there were photographs that are just startling. So we thanked them for that. We also had great help from Adam McNaughton of Canyon Lake. He gathered supplies, money, anything that he could to help the, the people that were impacted by the Holy Jim Fire. And this is what happens when you have a community as great as Canyon Lake, you have people that are here, great officer, resident also, that, that care not just about the people around them and their entire families, but they also care for people that, that will never see them, and they'll never know their names. And so with the deepest gratitude, Canyon Lake wants to thank you, and our people want to thank you all for everything that you've done. We can't say enough about our heroes that don't wear uniforms, but you are all of you awesome for what you've done, and you're certain one in a lot of time at the podium if you'd like to say a few things. Thank you. Maybe like to say, would you like to speak?
I was actually kind of shocked when I, I heard that I was gonna get this.
I wasn't alone by any means on making this happen. My fiance, Harmony Owen, she was like the front runner for the entire operation. So, like I, we both came up with the idea, and I was at work, I was in San Diego, and I was like, we gotta make this happen. I was talking to Frank out on the phone. So, me and her worked together strongly to, I mean, collect everybody, you can't have a fundraiser without funds to raise, and Canyon Lake, I mean, I was overwhelmed. I'm in San Diego at work, and there's like distributors from Orange County calling, everybody in Canyon Lake is calling me, and so, really, it was a collective community effort on my part, and I'm glad that I was a part of it.
We thank you, Linda. Thank you, Harmony.
All I can say is that my, my son, who's also my business partner, and I just knew that we had to just come up and do what we need to do. We're humbled, we appreciate what you guys are doing by honoring everybody, but really, it's just a matter of humanity, doing what you have to do without expecting getting an appreciation. I just hope that people know, if they can come visit us anytime, it's not a biker bar, it's everybody's bar. Really good feeling, good restaurant. As I was saying, one good thing came out of the whole thing is that now we see families bringing their kids up there, which is what my son and I really want. We hold, Hell's Kitchen is a platform for the charity work that we do for, I'm being a disabled vet myself, we do a lot of charity work to raise funds for the fallen officers and soldiers' families, also for children and kids. So, like us on Facebook, follow us, come to our fundraisers. Thirteenth of this month, we'll be also honoring the heroes of the holy fire. The residents up there didn't have the opportunity to thank them for what they actually did, so we'll be having an event for them there. My son and I, we just want to say thank you so much for everything that you guys have done. Without the community pulling together, we wouldn't have been able to do what we did. So, thank you guys.
Gentlemen, it is a rare thing to find people who are willing to sacrifice of self and help people. I'm gonna draw from a very personal experience that I've had last year. My daughter Leanne passed away a year ago. She was 19, and she was struck down by a rare form of bacterial meningitis while she was at college. And the one thing that I realized in the loss of my daughter was that even in her 19 years of gracing this God's great earth, the impact that she had on others the most was not because of her academic achievements, and it wasn't because of her athletic ability, it was because of the kindness that she showed to others. And that's what she's remembered for today. So, I would impress upon you that your act of kindness does not travel lightly to others, it impacts them greatly. Those are what you are made and remembered for. Those are the things that when you don't bring glory to yourself, but spread that joy to others, is what you will be remembered for. You should be very proud of that. Thank you for your sacrifice and your kindness.
Without people like you, the supports, the firefighters, many fires would go a lot further and make a lot more, have a lot more destruction than what they have. The firefighters, they need the, they, they spend a lot of energy. I did a tour of the fire up in Idowild, and I had an opportunity to eat breakfast there with Senator Stone, and I can tell you that when you step up and provide, what you provided to those firefighters, they feel like they are needed and appreciated, and we appreciate everything that you have done. With that, you, it would have been all my words. Thank you.
I'm sure you guys are always here and thanks a lot, but it won't end with here tonight. I know you guys will keep on getting it, and even though you might not wear a uniform, you're definitely those people that have their hearts on their sleeves. I just love that saying, and I feel it very much appropriate to you guys right now. So, on behalf of the Sunday Woman and the City of San Francisco District, I have sent you with these outstanding certificates.
On behalf of Supervisor Jeffries, I mentioned earlier, he was a volunteer firefighter for 30 years, and not to disparage or besmirch, anyway, the service of the people we just honored who are professionals, because of that service, he has a special place in his heart for people that do things because they want to and not because it's their job, people who give of their own personal time and their own personal resources when there's an emergency. So, he particularly appreciates when people step out and help others just because they want to or think it's important. As a side note, literally the week after our take a highway reopen, we went up to Hell's Kitchen as an entire staff, including the supervisor, for my birthday lunch. So, had a great time out on the deck, and one of the reasons was, we'd read about all that you've done during the fire, and we wanted to get out there and contribute to the business as well. So, we'll be back. But, Adam, we thank you for your service as well. I've not been to your restaurant.
One more for you, of course. This again is from the City of Canyon Lake. Our thanks to you for everything that you did during those times, for everything you did for us, for everything you did for our crews. And again, we'll just keep coming up to see you, hope to be there on the 13th. Thank you. And this is for you, for doing all that you did, and we can squeeze it if you'd like, we'll put Harmony in here. This was, everything that you all did, and the crews included, was outstanding and unique and amazing, and I think it has to be because we are so honored and am pleased to have people in our community that step up in the way that you all have. Thank you so much. Okay? Here on count of three, you'll play. One, two, three, one more. One, two, three, and... One, two, last one. We're gonna take just a 10-minute break so that we can spell ourselves, and those will have to rush off. (inaudible)
Thank you guys. Thank you, we appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you guys. Thank you, we appreciate it. Have a good night. You're gonna break, right? You're gonna break. Come on. Hey Randy, you can wake up. Have a good one. You too, sir. Did you enjoy tonight? Obviously, yes.
Let's get back to business, and please have Matthew Svensson come up to the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you Mayor Warren and City Council for allowing us this evening, and then there were a few. Right, it was amazing humanitarian efforts, I'm gonna go talk about a party. You know, it's, it's hard act of politics there. Good evening, everyone, I'm Matt Svensson, I'm President of the Canyon Lake Chamber. I'd like to start just by thanking everyone in the city and everyone who attended in the Chamber's hosting of our Oktoberfest this past Saturday. It was great to bring a German flavor into the town center, and it was like everyone had a great time. We have a lot of people that we'd like to thank, starting off with John Seitz, Rida Riley, the Sports Stop crew, and all the volunteers for their hard work in making the great event in the setup, but more importantly, I think in the teardown, because people stick around late into the evening to make sure our city remains clean and tidy and all picked up after a big event like that. We'd like to thank the Friday Flyer, they do so much for us with all their publicity and promotion the weeks prior. Donna Ritchie for her amazing photographs and promoting it afterwards about the funds that carries it to the next year for us. Also, to the American Bavarian Brass Band, they always do a great job and a lot of fun, and I think people really enjoy hearing them. All of our sponsors, we would like to recognize them, they're very generous, and they allow us to keep these kind of, kind of events going, they really support, support the community. So, not in order of importance, but first is the Sports Stop, they're, they're the big sponsor of it, obviously, and then we have ABC Bounce Company, Berkshire Hathaway Real Estate, Blue Water Realty, Canyon Lake Car Club, Canyon Mattress and More, CR&amp;R, JDI Dance, the Lake Elsinore Casino, Lakefront Family Dentistry, Platinum Plumbing, and Southern California Edison. Those are all major contributors to putting on the event, so we'd like to thank them very much. Also, we kind of had a special thank you out to Fire Station 60 this evening. The wind has really kicked up in the afternoon for its setup, and a lot of people that have enough weight to load down the EZ-Ups, so I was able to run over to the fire station, and they helped us fill sandbags and bring it back to keep these ups down and kept everything tidy and moving right along without a, without a head hurt. So, we'd like to thank Fire Station, Fire Station 60 for their help on that. Switching gears, moving forward, we've talked about it a few times, but on October 27th, beginning at 9:00 a.m., here in the town center, right in front of City Hall, the Chamber will host its 26th Annual Parade of Frights event. We'll have costume children, they trick or treat about 50 businesses locally, and we'll have some other businesses in addition this year with EZ-Ups and pop-ups, also handing out candy. There'll be a costume contest afterwards, and DJ Mike Schreier of Good Time Entertainment will be playing music. ABC Bounce Company will be there with bounce houses and carnival games, and we'll have a special appearance again by Thunder from the Lake Elsinore Storm, and Chef Anton will be there with his bean bag as well, fun around that. We are seeking sponsors for Parade of Frights. If you're interested, please contact Allison at the Chamber of Commerce, and she can get you all set up and going with that. We will also be contacting businesses here in the near future to sign up for the treasure map and get that stamp and all that out for the kids, so they can do that, that fun with the trick or treat, all the different businesses on the treasure map. So, please attend, attending is a great event, it's been going a long time, we have a wonderful turnout for that. Lastly, I'd say thank you to the city and Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District candidates for attending our little forum last week. It's our meet the candidates event, and we thought it went really well. And with that being said, we just would like to encourage everyone to get out of the boat on November 6th, because it's extremely important. So, thank you for having us, we always appreciate it. See you next month.
We also have a presentation, sorry, I was turned off, of a presentation by Gina Dixon, Go Enforcement Officer.
So, I've been really looking forward and excited to sharing with you guys all the stuff that we've done this fiscal year. I think that we do a lot of big things that we have to discuss with council as a whole, but a lot of the small things that make us big are overlooked, so I'm really looking forward to sharing this with everybody. So, one of our primary duties is enforcing the regulations within the BLM lands, and that goes from anything to illegal dumping, littering, and fire prevention. Those are the big things that we're out there to do, and this year, the fire prevention was huge. We did come across over 40 vehicles contacted, that doesn't include the ones that drive away immediately when they see us. So, these are ones that we actually spoke to the vehicle occupants. Five recovered stolen vehicles that we were able to turn in and turn over to our Canyon Lake Police Department, and six abandoned vehicles or vessels or parts thereof that were removed and towed from the BLM land. One, this was an unreported stolen just this summer, that was, the victims were a family just out of Paris, just outside of our city limits. We were able to contact them and reunite them with the vehicle. That would have been for them a complete and total loss because it had minimum coverage. This family was so excited and shared such gratitude with us for contacting them, and we did do so with every vehicle we find out there, we try to contact the owner first so that they don't incur fees if they can get out there and get it themselves, which is exactly what this family did with their vehicle. These are some of our daily finds, just pictures. That one in the water is an actual boat that was abandoned. We probably didn't know it was out there until the lake levels got lower and we were able to remove that. The red vehicle was a stolen vehicle that was recovered. That is frequently the condition that they're in when they're out there, so no shock when you come across a stolen vehicle. People dispose of their vessel parts. And the truck in the corner is people with unregistered jet skis trying to launch them out there, which doesn't seem like a big deal when you consider the quagga mussel and the fact that there's no inspections for these and they're not registered and they're not paying a mussel fee and the rapid rate at which the mussels take up the habitat away from the fish. Being out there is important, it's very important. And the illegal dumping, as you can see, that will be there until we have our next cleanup event, which is scheduled for the end of this month or beginning of January, when we can get the crew out there. So, we do have a lot of day camping and overnight camping. So, I just wanted everybody to be able to see, this is just a very small portion of what we see on a regular basis. But I feel like when you see what we come across, you understand, the public better understands our need to be out there. And these fire pits were on fire and still burning red when we went out there this summer. And I was thinking, who needs a fire when it's 110 degrees outside? I don't know, I don't have that answer, but they're there. Business licensing is a large portion of what we do and something that we're really trying to wrangle in, thanks to Mayor Pro Tim Green and Councilmember Bonner. They're really helping us get where we need to be with our program to make sure that it's fair and consistent for everybody because that is one of our main complaints. Stormwater and urban runoff, this helps us to stay in compliance with our permit that's granted by the state, that's also granted by the county, that is also given by the EPA, which is the Federal Environmental Protection Agency. So, we had 99 calls for service last year, 63 that were something major, and 36 that were prohibited discharges that through education, we are slowly getting a handle on and the residents are understanding that even if it's biodegradable, it still can present a problem in the long run because it changes the habitats of the water that our fish swim in. This, we actively participate in the Riverside County Abandoned Vehicle Abatement Program, which reports to California Highway Patrol. And this year, our recovered costs from the program for participating was $70,696.99. $28,299.38 we were able to be reimbursed for the purchase of the Jeep that our residents see us utilizing out there on the BLM land. It wasn't paid for 100% because it's not used 100% of the time for that program. So, we tried to make sure that we have documentation to back up what our AVA caseload is versus everything else. We issued, towed 10 vehicles in the program, issued 163 notices. And so, majority of our work here is proactive, not reactive. 59 calls for service that were reactive to complaints. Without spending too much time, we had 210 public nuisance cases. This ranged from structures in disrepair, unpainted, mostly homes. We don't have a huge problem with our commercial areas. Items causing health or fire hazards, green pools, vegetation, nuisances on the lake, foreclosure, property registration, and our special events educational booths. All of those cases are reactive. We're not out there looking for those as of yet. We're here to help the residents any way that we can. And so, we're mostly responding to complaints. But, overall for the year, we had 438 service calls. And that doesn't include the AVA stuff because those numbers were broken out. And 765 business license responses for a total call for service of 1,203 for the year. So, we are really proud of what we've been doing for our residents this year. And I'm really looking forward to, even with the council that is supportive, what we can do for the community is limitless. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation on Measure S.
It's coming.
Coming, it's on its way. While we're waiting for it to get here, Gina, we have a question, sorry.
Gina, what are we actually doing about these cars that are parked with "For Sale" signs that are unattended? You're citing them for what?
Well, we, vehicles for sale have to be parked and identified as vehicles solely parked there for sale. The way our ordinance is written is if they are attached to a business and they have business owner permission to be parked in our center, we, there's not much we can do about it because a vehicle advertised for sale, the Supreme Court has said is also a freedom of speech. So, we actually have to be able to prove that the vehicle is left there solely for sale, not because they're coming in here to shop, not because they're coming in here to work. So, honestly, we handle those by calling the number on the car and finding out where they're here. We note when they're coming in in the morning and if they're not leaving, that's a fairly easy way to know that it's strictly parked here for sale. But, I have to say, we've had 100% compliance with our residents. We don't have people that refuse to abide by our ordinance. So, we've actually not issued any citations for that. They're a simple phone call, a posting of the vehicle to let them know what the code is, informing them, educating them on the code, and they are more than happy to comply.
On the weekends, you'll find boats and golf carts and assorted vehicles that are parked out in the shopping center. I'm just curious if we're enforcing that or if people are ignoring what you're doing.
We are enforcing it. That complaint is 90% complaint driven. Now, keep in mind, our code officers aren't going to go out there and mark the car or the boat right here, but not the vehicle next to it. And to be honest with you, boats are easy because no one's using a boat to get to and from our shopping centers. So, that's there just to be for sale. Not yet anyways, yeah, that's true.
Okay, I think that answers my question, thanks Gina.
Gina, would you explain the non-op vehicles so that the audience out there will know? Because there's a lot of complaints that come in about vehicles setting in driveways or sitting on the street that haven't moved in a considerable length of time. And what your authority with the AVA and working with the POA also?
That's actually a really good question. So, our ordinance is written for abandoned, inoperative, damaged, wrecked, or burned. Now, there is no ugly law and there is no law that, for private streets, that says a vehicle has to be moved every 72 hours. That's the public right of way. And because our streets are behind the gates, they're privately maintained, they're private property. So, if, one of the complaints is that people park their cars in front of other residents' homes and they don't move them often enough, or they don't have a place to park, or they live in a cul-de-sac and now they don't have a place to put their trash cans. That is not an AVA call for service. An AVA call for service means it's got flat tires. It can't be driven around the block if I knock on their door. They can't get in it and start it and drive it away, that's inoperative. So, if we're not sure about a vehicle, we take time, we come back, we see has it been moved at all before we issue a notice and make contact or disturb the resident. We try to be very conscientious about that fine line. Again, we issue a lot of notices, but we don't tow very many because most people are happy to get out there and show us that they still care about that car and it will run. So, but vehicles on jacks and to all of our citizens and residents, that is a health and safety hazard. Vehicles on jacks cannot ever be left unattended. So, my suggestion is if it's a flat tire and you have to order a tire, don't change it out until the tire gets here.
Jack had a question for you also.
I just had a question, I may have missed it. On the BLM property, we are not allowing overnight camping, are we?
Absolutely not, we don't allow it, yeah.
Because that was very important when we started, so we don't have Camp City out there.
And that's one of the reasons that we're also out there every day.
That's great.
Prevention.
Thank you, any other questions? Okay, now are we queued up?
Yep.
Okay, good, alright. Presentation on Measure S.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We did a informational presentation to the chamber about a month ago. I want to preface this by saying this is strictly informational. We're not, the city does not have a position on Measure S. We just want to get the information out there. It'll be on the June 6th ballot for everybody to vote on. No, I'm sorry, June. Thank you, November 6th, excuse me, in a month. So, and the polling, just the polling place is here in this chamber for the residents of Canyon Lake, for those who like to come to the polls and don't do it absentee. So, just quickly, we're going over the new one. So, what is Measure S? Measure S is the Civic Canyon Lake's Public Safety and Local Control Continuation. The initial user utility, which is a user utility tax, that tax was passed back in November of 2014 with a sunset in December of 2020. This Measure S was placed unanimously on the November ballot by the City Council. If this measure is renewed, it will continue existing voter-approved funding, which was, initially it was voter-approved back in 2014. And this will not raise the tax rates. Everything with regards to the user utility tax will remain the current rate that it is now, which is 3.95. This will be essential for public safety services, maintaining local control and keeping city spending transparent. The reason, the necessary reason for Measure S, Measure S is, as you're aware, when you look at our budget revenues, it brings in about a million dollars a year for the city. It actually is our largest revenue source. So, it's essential for our quality of life and central public services with regards to police services, fire, and dispatch and EMT services. By doing that, the voter, the UUT has helped the city reopen Station 60. We're in our second fiscal year of having it open. It's been a real blessing to have that reopened again. We have that service, that first response here now in the city again. It's been a real vital to our quality of life. As required by state law, Measure S is fiscally accountable. What happens is, this is, the UUT goes to our general fund, it's not specific. However, as the council's aware, 75% of the city's general fund goes to our police and fire contracts. It's approximately $4.1 million this year. And in order to, with part of state law requiring audits, Measure S spending is transparent. We have annual audits, our last, since I've been here, the audits have been clean, there have been no findings. They specifically look at all the revenues expenditures, making sure that everything is in with accounting practices and within the limits the council has set. And so far, that has all come back clean. This allows, Measure S allows us to obviously maintain local control. Measure S funding cannot be taken by the state. I know things in the past where we've had, back with the VLF and the triple flip, where they did things like that in Sacramento where we're sticking money. Last perfect examples, when they eliminated redevelopment from the state, taking those funds from local government. Measure S cannot go outside of the city of Canyon Lake, it will always be spent here. It can only be spent on approved local uses. So, obviously, it's part of the budget. And so, whatever the council approves in the budget, Measure S is spent for that. And obviously, as I mentioned earlier, 75% of that is our police and fire contracts. As I said earlier, currently, the rate is 3.95. That rate is not being proposed to be changed, so there will be no increase in the tax rate. So, there is no increase in cost to the resident here in Canyon Lake, it will remain the same. Yeah, just to reiterate, if Measure S is on the ballot for November 6th, and so, and we'll have the continuation of fiscal responsibility, proper planning. Everything comes before the council. As you know, when we go through the budget every year, we have a few workshops, we get the council's info, we work individually with each council member to make sure that we're, that our budget meets the needs of the residents of Canyon Lake. And so, and when they approve the budget, obviously, the biggest thing for us is public safety. And I know that's the council's number one agenda is public safety. And so, as you can see, 75% of our budget goes to public safety. Another reason for placing it on the ballot this year is it's a consolidated election. So, obviously, by doing so, the city's being more prudent. We're able to wrap it up with the cost, it's not going to be, where if we had, with it being a year out, if we were to place it on the ballot next year, that would have been a special election, that would have cost funds. And so, this was more prudent for us to roll it in with this year's election. You can see all this information, this presentation's on the city's website. If you go to the main page, there's a button that says Measure S. It has all the information for residents so they can make an informed decision. The council wanted this information on the website and out in front of the public. One of the reasons we're doing it here tonight is to make sure that the residents are informed. Once again, the city does not take a position on this, they just want them to have all the information so that they're able to make an informed decision according to the dictates of how they vote.
Thank you. Okay, our next up is public comments, but before we begin those, Attorney Martin had some things that she wanted to add.
At our last meeting, we had some confusion about taking public comments on the consent agenda. It's an agenda item, obviously, so you take public comments on it. At the time, and according to your rules of procedure, at the time, the motion is made for approval of an item, which would include the consent agenda, you would then take public comment. At that point, the person asking to comment on an item on the consent agenda can do so. There's no procedure that's in your rules allowing the public to pull an item. But, the comment can still be heard, I want to emphasize that.
Okay, perfect. We have all the comments, one, okay. Oh, that's right, I will say.
Any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to an individual being heard by the city council. The city council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you are commenting on the agenda item, your comments will be heard at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. Please note that if you are addressing the city council on items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items. Therefore, the city council may only do the following. Refer the matter to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or give a very limited factual response. I have one card, Nancy Horton.
Nancy Horton on behalf of EVWD. Just wanted to give you the final report on the water purchase that happened in the month of September. Approximately 2.8 feet of water was added to the elevation in the lake. It was a purchase of 1,800 acre feet. The total cost was $1.3 million. We don't have a final amount, but the first loss...
We don't have a final amount, but the first loss to evaporation and saturation of the soil was around 28%, which is huge when you think about $1.3 million of purchase price. But as time went on and the soil beneath the San Jacinto River became saturated, the loss was less. So they're still calculating the total actual loss. That hasn't been done yet. The loss to evaporation in the lake has already begun. When the final amount, it was 1377.66 feet above sea level. It's already gone down several tenths of an inch because evaporation has taken place naturally in the lake. The purpose of this purchase was not for recreational use in Canyon Lake. It was to increase the amount of water that's in the reservoir because the water district could really not remove any if there's no water in the lake. So what the point was, was to have this water in the lake when we get our winter rains. The hope was that some of it would go over the dam and help the situation in Lake Elsinore, which is very dire right now. But it also had the advantage of giving us more water. And the very first weekend, many people went out in their boats who have not been able to use their boats for most of the summer because of the low level. Thank you.
Okay. Item seven, consent calendar. You have a comment?
Yes, John Zites, 30279 Clearwater Drive, Canyon Lake, California, 92587. Comment on public comments. I know you won't respond, but you did not take questions. Based on Measure S, which is, I think, indicative of what you're doing with Measure S. But that, if it wasn't the presentation that was given at the Chamber of Congress, and you have two members here, and you were there, did you see any charts or graphs in there? In this presentation that you saw at the chamber? So it wasn't the same presentation. But what can you say and when can you say it? Under Vargas versus Salinas is the leading case on the, the issue of what you can do and when you can do it. And it happens to be a UUT in Salinas, 13% they were trying to eliminate. But the law has said a fair presentation of facts must be made. A fair presentation must make full disclosure of the advantages, disadvantages, and consequences so that voters can make an informed choice. You didn't have that in this presentation. You didn't show that even if you don't have an increase over the 3.95, you are going to take 500,000 plus each year out of surplus. And that means you hit zero in five years. And I think the people should know that. The people should understand that. And I think you have a requirement under Vargas versus Salinas that you, you make the, the consequences known to the people and the consequences of them not voting for it. That means in January of 2021, you lose $500,000. And, and the subsequent budget year, you lose a million dollars. And, but the people don't know that. So there's no consequences that are explained in any presentation that you've made.
Continue with the consent calendar.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items.
Are there? I'm sorry. We need a motion before a copy.
Okay. A motion to adopt the consent as, as presented.
Okay. Motion and a second. We need a roll call, please. We have all the public comments first.
John Zites, 30279 Clearwater Drive, Canyon Lake, California, 92587. I understand what the attorney said to you earlier. And, and she said there was no law or, or ruling that says that I could pull something in your, your policies. And I know you've not read the policies because I was on the council when we voted on these things and you didn't know what you were doing. But, and never read them. But let me read to you and to the city attorney, the item 2.7 of your policy. Items of routine nature and non-controversial shall be placed on the consent agenda. All items may be approved by one blanket motion upon unanimous consent without discussion. Now, to me, that is very simple. That it says without discussion. That's not what you did last, last month. And you can look at the minutes that I wanted to pull to show you didn't do that. And without discussion, how can I come up here under public comments and speak? I, I challenged the city attorney to say that policy is incorrect. You know, if you don't want to hear from people, if you don't want to discuss it, it's, it's like, there's, there's an item that I gave to, to pass out on the claims and demands, that I, I just can't understand how you're doing something under the claim and demands. But can't pull it, can't discuss it. Because the city attorney is saying that under the consent agenda, I can come up and make a comment. But your policy says without discussion. So I challenge you to, you know, I tried to change this rule about me coming up and giving my name and address because that's what your rule says. Anybody who wants to speak goes to the lecter, doesn't have to fill out the card. It's in there and that's why you have to do it. And the Brown Act allows me to speak on any item on the, on the agenda. That's the Brown Act. And I challenged the city attorney to say, okay, the Brown Act says that, yet, your policy says there's no discussion. So I'm, I'm entitled to discuss these things according to the Brown Act. Not entitled to discuss it according to your consent calendar. Anybody want to read this? I have a copy for it if you want to take a look at it. Don't, I wouldn't trust me. I'd read it. If there's any questions.
Thank you. I think it's Barrett's response because some of Mr. Zites' statements are incorrect. First of all, the council does entertain public comment on all agenda items. And in fact, you're commenting now. I think you need to read the entire portion of section 2.7, which says, "Items of routine nature and non-controversial shall be placed on the consent agenda. All items may be approved by one blanket motion upon unanimous consent without discussion." Doesn't say without comment. It says without discussion. Unless prior to, unless prior to or following review of the consent agenda, any council member requests that any item be withdrawn from the consent agenda for separate consideration. And then it talks about abstaining from voting. If you wanted to make a comment on the consent agenda, this was your time to do it. I, I, as I understood it, you wanted to give a handout and make a comment on an item, but you didn't.
Well, because I think what you're asking for is, is not consistent with policy or law or anything else, but that's what I just agree.
This would not be the first time. Or the second, or the third or fourth.
Or fourth or fifth or whatever.
Correct.
I, I do recognize that you don't follow your own policies and procedures. Okay.
Okay, I don't agree with that. You can keep saying it, but for the record, that is a misstatement and inaccurate.
Well, then, then I want to discuss the two items on your. All right, would you please pass out the document that I gave to? It is on the agenda.
He wants to comment under claims, on an item on claims and demands, and he has a handout he wants you to have. He spent his three minutes, but I recommend we hear it. Does that work for you guys?
Well, can you just hold off and get, get it passed out? Just while you're passing that out, I'm, I'm, Madam, the city attorney. I, I think if what you're doing, what you're saying, Madam City Attorney, is, is appropriate, then you could put on a consent agenda and item, discuss it, and then vote on it. And the people at home won't even know what's happening. And that's not what the Brown Act is looking for. But I'll move on now for my three minutes in this discussion. On your claims and demands for this, this, this week, you have item 24498 of the check for $4,340. As you can see, last month, you had the same thing, but for six, no, I'm sorry. $1,660. No, that's this month. That's this month. So last month you had that and it's for an AVA audit. I sent a request to the city and asked, I want to see a copy of the AVA audit. I got back from my, my document request, there is no AVA audit. I said, well then, what did you spend $4,300 for? And as you can see from the documents that follow that, the typed documents, that, that there is a page, and I'll just look at it real quick, that you've got that shows the city is billed $1,065 for a $17,000, $17,980 report that is indicated as the maximum amount that's going to be paid in, in the other document. It's underlined that they will do this report for a maximum amount, not to exceed $17,980. So now, we had a $4,340 check, but I guess we didn't pay that. And, and Councilmember Haggerty, you're aware of the fact that the city can issue two checks. And it's your fault if you get, if they make a mistake and issue it. But I guess they're not issuing that one. And they have the new one for $1,065. I don't see anything for $1,065. Like 1,600, I'm sorry, $1,665. There, there's not a document for that. And there's a bill there for $4,300 that's issued in July. Why are you paying $4,300 when they said that the maximum amount is $17,000 and your amount is $1,000? Just, just baffles me as to how it can go. And I guess under the, the minutes that I wanted to have pulled, the city attorney now has backed off because I thought she, I found that she was doing the wrong thing. Because you can see on page 47, with all that discussion about the check that you, as far as I'm concerned, you should not have. That states that I had asked for that to be pulled. That the city attorney stated that the comments made in the consent calendar as of item 7.2 could be put under section A for purposes of minutes to avoid confusion. I say she was CYA-ing the fact that you shouldn't have had that discussion in the first place. And that, and that Mr. Zites explained about the order of the meeting. And then I discussed the check. I never heard the answer because the answer was given while I was speaking.
Thank you, John. You've gone through your three minutes for the second part.
Thank you.
Aaron, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just quickly. We mentioned, we brought this up at the finance and planning meeting yesterday. So Councilmember Bonner, Mayor Pro Tem Green are aware. This is a typo. It's, it's kind of an interesting fact. What happened was is this firm who happens to do the county's AVA audit also did an audit for us on our building and safety services. And so this should have said, I think it was agreed upon procedures audit is what it should have said. This has nothing to do with AVA. This has to do with the building and, building and safety and public works out that we had done with, with Charles Abbott. Yes, we mentioned, we brought it up to Finance Director Shea, and I believe the correction has already been made. Mayor Pro Tem Green or Councilmember Bonner have anything to add, but they heard all of this yesterday.
Hey, it's already done.
Just a public records request. Can I get a copy of that audit? Whenever you're going to call it, that stuff, I asked for a copy.
The audit has not been, is not done yet. It's not a document yet. When it's out, you can make a public records request and get it.
Okay, so we're done with seven onto eight. No polled items?
Now we have to have a roll call, but we didn't, we had a motion in the second, so. Yes.
Councilmember Bonner?
Yes.
Councilmember Aaron Cranz?
Yes.
Councilmember Haggerty?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Motion carried five to.
I was going to say either yo. I wasn't sure what I was supposed to say.
Motion carried 5 to 02 for the consent calendar.
Thank you. Okay, schedule of future events. We, we don't, we don't have any future events. Good grief. We have, everything is on the website, on our calendar as always. If anybody has something that they would like to add to our calendar, the city's calendar, you just have to let us know. We'd be happy to put it on there.
Absolutely.
Item 10, business items.
All right, last but not least. Okay. Good evening, mayor, city council. Tonight, staff is asking for consideration of approval for fiscal year 1920 for the community development grant in the amount of $18,217. We are asking council to, to approve the funding and allocate it towards public service agencies. Let me just give you a little bit of history on what we've been using that money before in the past.
Can you start at the beginning of where it comes from?
Where the.
Where the money comes from? Federal?
Yes, it's federal. It comes through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. So they have extreme strict guidelines that we have to meet. CDVG is intended only to be used for low income purposes, period. Can't be used for anything else. Has to go to programs that are just low income based. What we have done here in the past few years has been a home repair program. And I think it's been going on for, I think, maybe, I'd say about four years. Since then, some of that allocation from past years hasn't been used. And a lot of it has to do with the program just not having the, the attraction or, or the need for it. There hasn't been as much request than maybe we thought we would see with it. So because of that, for the last, I want to say the last three fiscal years, we still have on the books somewhere just a little bit over $25,000 that are still there. Just last year for, for fiscal 1819, myself, county EDA, and also Habitat for Humanity, we, we had a sort of a consensus that for, for the funding for 1819, that there was no applications that maybe we can use that funding for. So rather than that funding just sitting there and not doing anything, we came to the consensus, let's just give it to, to HOPE. If you all know with HOPE. Only because, you know, they're, they're, they were the only approved applicant that we had last year for, that met the CDVG requirements. So what, we had a discussion about this again this year for this particular funding. And because again, we have money still left on the books for, for, for past years on this, just a little over 25,000. We, we all came to the consensus also as well that maybe what we need to do is, is open this up to public service agencies like HOPE and other organizations that may want a portion of that money. So what we're, I'm proposing, what we're proposing is maybe for the city not to submit an application this year for the home repair program. We will still have that $25,000 that's still there. We'll still use it towards HOPE. But for this fiscal, particular fiscal 1920, what we're thinking, and maybe what we need to do is just 100% of it goes to public service agencies. See the applications that come in here, find out and see who qualifies. And then what I'm proposing is maybe at the December 5th meeting, we'll put all the applicants out and we'll have council decide percentage wise how they want it to be up the, the, the portion to each applicant. Now again, they have to meet the qualifications. If they don't meet the qualifications and we only have one applicant, the suggestion would be that the funding goes to that, to that applicant, so. Questions?
Comment, question? Mike, I know in the past, when this program first started, there were several mobiles that were in really bad disrepair and a lot of funds went towards those. Also, there are several homes in Canyon Lake that are in disrepair. The people are on food stamps. I think they would qualify. I personally think that it's just kind of lost its momentum. I personally think that it's just kind of lost its momentum. I think people aren't aware of it and marketing it has, I'm not criticizing your marketing, but I think we could have done a better job of getting word out. My suggestion is that perhaps we contact the POA. They have inspectors that drive around and find properties that are in, or, you know, tell them they need to fix something. Get a list from them of the homes that really do need repair and then contact those people. I kind of hate to give up the program because I think if we really get proactive, that we could find more people for it because Canyon Lake does have some areas that are in, there's some homes in areas that, and mobiles that really need repair. And I know personally of one in the mobiles that can't afford it. Both of the, the couple are, the man is dying of cancer and the woman has major health issues. And they have minimal income. Those are the kinds of people we need to get to and I think the POA could at least help identify those.
I've had discussions too with, with enforcement that maybe we can kind of do that too as well with them. And the, the one thing you have to remember is they still have to qualify. If they do not qualify, they will not receive the funding, no matter how disrepair their.
They should qualify.
Correct, but until they look at their finances, they, they, they won't know. What I'm, what I'm proposing is not to eliminate the home repair program. Just continue it and maybe for this fiscal year it just goes to, or for 1920 it'll just go to public services agencies and then maybe look at it to see where it's at the following year, but I'm.
You're confusing me. We have $25,000.
Yes.
You're suggesting that we send out proposals to qualifying agencies that would get, we would delegate that.
No, no, the 25 will sit there for the home repair program. Still, this funding, what I'm proposing is that goes to the public service agencies.
There's two different, there's two different amounts here. So what Mike's talking about is he's asking for direction on 1920, which is about just over $18,000. There's currently, so that's $18,000 for 1819. There's currently, right now, $25,000 from past years that we haven't used, that we still, that we're going to use that $25,000 for the home repair program.
Correct.
The eight, so what we did last year is we took.
So you're going to take, I thought it was the.
No, so there's two, there's two different things. So we're going to keep the $25,000 dollars for the home program until that funds are expended. And what staff, what staff is recommending is taking this year's allotment of the $18,000 and putting it out to public service agencies because we're not getting the participation in the home program. And so we can see what kind of need comes up from the community, if there's other service groups that want to come out and need the funding. And at the same time, we can, you know, if there are people who are still interested in the home repair program, there's still funding there to do that.
And what we can do is we can, we're not going to do away with the home repair program. Even after this particular fiscal year, we'll look at it next, next fiscal year and, and see if maybe the, there's still, you know, we may have more applicants that may want to submit.
So you're talking about '21 would be the next.
For, for, you're basically referring for 2021, correct.
So for 19 and 20?
Yes.
Which is through, what, June?
It's, 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 yeah, it's through June, correct. July to June.
We have the $25,000.
Well, that 25 will get used however, whether it gets used within this current fiscal year, next fiscal year.
But it, but you're saying we would not pursue the money for the next fiscal year, which would be mid-20 to mid-21?
No, we would still pursue that, but the programs that we'd open, right. So the 25 is from past years, right? So we have a bank, we have, we have, we have $25,000 from like five or, from like.
It's three fiscal years.
Three fiscal years that we haven't spent. So we've got that bank there. So going forward for the next round, which would be fiscal year 1920, so that'd be July of 19 when it starts, where staff is recommending that we just open it up to service projects and not add and not dedicate a portion.
Right.
Not, and so in the past, we would, how much do we usually give to hope?
This amount keeps going lower every year too as well.
What, what's, what's the percentage of, that we usually give to hope?
To hope, 15%.
Okay, so you take the other, so you take the other 85%. In the past, 85% of that amount would go into the home repair program. We're saying for one fiscal year, we're going to take that 85% and open it up to service groups and nonprofits for the opportunity to create for that money to use it for just one. Right, for just one year. And just when we come back, and then when we come back a year from now for fiscal year 2021, if we see, if we've seen the need and we see a lot of usage out of the home repair program, then we can take those funds and say, okay, we can go back to advocating, okay, we can put 80, 85% back into the home repair program starting in fiscal year 2021. Okay?
Okay, I'm good.
Sorry for the confusion.
Before you, before you go further, have a comment, question?
So Habitat for Humanity is operating this program. They, they are the ones who take the applications, make the decisions, et cetera. I think that's where the breakdown has happened. I highly recommend that the city look at all the applications that have been received, the applications that have been fulfilled and the ones that have not been fulfilled. I happen to have a couple of friends who've applied a couple of years. They've been told they qualify. Their projects have been, they said, "Well, we'll get back to you about the project." But nobody gets back to them. So they call and they call and they call and nobody gets back to them. There are some problems and I think that the word has gotten out that it is a great, great deal of paperwork. It's the same as applying for a mortgage for your house. You have to prove your income or lack of it, et cetera. It is very hard for many seniors who are low-income to actually do that paperwork. But this lady that I know has done it. And I, every time I see her, which is about once a week, I ask her, "Have you heard anything from Habitat for Humanity?" "No." I tell her, "Call them back again." This has gone on for many months. So I think the city needs to audit what Habitat for Humanity is actually doing. There are people that have wanted help and haven't gotten it. There are people who have gotten it and they're very pleased. But there are people who've been on hold for a very long time and they're very frustrated. So that would be my recommendation is you might get a lot more applications if people were treated efficiently and effectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Yeah, I want to express again very quickly, I felt, that's why I felt bad that we would drop the program for a year because I think if it was marketed right now, if it was handled efficiently along with being marketed, that we would have people, because there are more people now than I've ever seen in Canyon Lake, that I would then qualify and they certainly need help with their.
The market is done between us and also Habitat. So they also do marketing too as well.
Apparently they're not handling the paperwork. We need to do something, get some kind of a coordinated effort going where we audit them, we work with them, we do something to assure that, you know, we, we need to go find out, look at their applications and say, "Why did you spend that?" We need to deal with it.
You know, the only thing I can say is HUD is very difficult to deal with. And, and you're right, it is like doing a mortgage and maybe even worse, so.
You have no money. You have a lot of time to go on.
Yeah.
This sentiment was, was brought up during the conference in Washington DC. It's not just Canyon Lake and Habitat. For Humanity, it's all over. The mayors were complaining about how it's handled and how long it takes to get anything processed and.
Unfortunately, we have really no control of that. And you know.
I have the phone number of somebody who does.
Wow.
Let's see what we can do. Any other questions? We have a direction on this? A motion?
I would like to make motion that we form an ad hoc committee to see what we can do with, work with Mike, whatever you would suggest.
You know, unfortunately, these funds have a timeline. So in order for us to, to at least be awarded the, the allocation, we have to submit by a certain date. And I forget what it is. I think it's like December. So if we're going to put this off, it's potentially we can lose this funding.
So we don't have the funding in our possession. It's just what's available to us. Is that what you're saying? We have the $25,000 banked, but not guaranteed?
No, that is, that, well, it's not per se, it's banked. But, but it's, it's money that's there that we can pull to use towards the program. So it's.
Just until December?
No, no, no.
No, the new.
The, the $18,000. The $18,000, this is what is going on.
No, no, not recently.
So staff's asking that approval to go out and, and do the noticing and put out the application, to take applications for public service organizations.
Yeah, because it does have a deadline. And, and again, if we do not submit, if council does not approve the movement forward, then potentially we can lose this allocation.
I'm, I'm not saying we shouldn't approve moving forward. I'm saying we need to get with the program and find out why it's backlogged and why there's a problem and where the problems are and how we can help resolve them for the future.
I can meet with Habitat and try to make, maybe even with County EDA and see if we can kind of.
Maybe you can get the name from Nancy of this.
That was going to be what.
Just as an example for them.
And I was going to give it directly to Habitat and see what we can do, so.
Mike, can I ask a question?
Yes.
This credit, we, I'll call it a credit because it's, it's money out there, I guess. But can it be allocated for home repairs as well as the public service award also, which is 18? We got 25. Can we do them concurrently or do you have to only do one?
I mean. No, 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 we, in the past, that's what we would do. So 85% of it would be allocated, of that funding would be allocated to the city for the home repair program. 15% of it will go to public service agencies.
Okay, but we're talking about 25 here and 18 we're applying for, correct?
Yeah, we're only talking about the 18 we're applying for.
Okay, but we have 25 that can be utilized for home repair if the applicants met all the criteria and the mountains of paperwork.
Yeah.
So both programs can go.
Side by side.
Correct. That's all I need though.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
So do we have a direction on this upcoming? And the whole process is that we have to apply for it and it is a short window of opportunity. If we don't and they withdraw those funds, we may not be able to have that opportunity again. So all Mike is asking for is for us to move forward instead of continuing to try what we've been trying and banking all that, move forward with this $18,000 into a new, a possible new direction.
So if council approves, tomorrow the application will come available to the public service agencies. They'll have 30 days to submit. Then we go through the review process. That's between myself, County EDA, and Habitat. And, and we'll determine who meets the criteria for CDVG. And, and then at the December 5th council meeting, we will have the, the applicants, the applicants here and we can say which ones we want to approve. Again, if we only have one, they get the 100% of it. Again, it just depends on how many people submit applications and who meets the criteria for CDVG.
Okay, I move that we approve the fiscal year 19, in 2019 and '20 Community Development Block Grant Program.
A second.
Okay, we need a roll call. Councilmember Bonner?
Yes.
Councilmember Aaron Cranz?
Yes.
Councilmember Haggerty?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, city manager comments.
Just a reminder that the election is November 6th. So for those who don't do absentee, like I said, the polling place for all Canyon Lake residents will be here, down here in the council chambers.
Thank you. Okay, so we have council member comments. Let's start with Councilmember Bonner.
Okay, I thought it was possible to be shorter than last month, but it's almost. First of all, the League of California, League of California Cities Annual Conference was the same week and same day as the RCTC. So I do vote for RCTC in the month of September. I just want to quickly bring up this roundtable. There's two roundtables. There was one roundtable, that's the, the city, the POA, the water district, law enforcement, community patrol. And that's usually the second Monday. But because the next coming Monday is the League of California Cities Riverside Division Golf Tournament, we're going to move it to the next one, the 15th, over at the Copperhole because the country club will be closed for those two weeks. We all have the Economic Development Roundtable, which is Warren Kelsey, Ron Martel, Matt from the chamber. And we talk about opportunities like the BLM and of course, the city manager and Mike is there. So we'll have, we'll still do that on the next Tuesday, the 9th. So that will continue that. And last but not most, I guess you already said, let's kind of, let's vote. We need to have people get out there and vote. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Aaron Cranz?
Yeah, excuse me, I'm sorry. I did still have several meetings this past month. That on the 6th, I had a SCAG meeting. A lot of discussion about the homeless sleeping on the streets. And of course, this is a topic that's discussed everywhere. WRCO, August, it's got the same item or same thing on their agenda lately. We're talking quite a bit about what has to be done relocating these people. And we all know it's a problem. And I don't know that anybody has a solution just yet that. On the, as Councilmember Bonner just mentioned, on the 11th or the 13th, we had the League of Cities Convention in Long Beach. And it's something that's always enjoyable. And I think we all benefited from some of the sessions that we attended there. We had a quick meeting on the 17th, that's about 10 minutes or so, to authorize our mayor to be able to travel to Washington DC, which was quite an honor for the city and for her as well. And I'm sure she'll have more to say about that than I will. So I won't steal your thunder on that. Weekly now I'm having, I shouldn't say I. We, as an extension of WRCO, the WCE meeting, which is the program for looking for alternative energy. And I must admit that so far, I'm pretty thoroughly confused as to what we talk about. I asked the administrator Monday when I sat at the WRCO meeting if I could spend some time with her so she could help me out with a little bit. And she was willing to do so and said I wasn't, I wasn't alone. So I'd be happy to explain what it is that the WCE does if I knew. But for the time being, I'm just going to kind of wing it. And the 20th, I had my vector reading. And once again, I'll say that perhaps I should talk to Donna. I didn't do that, Donna Ritchie that is. And see about putting these articles in the variety flyer because it's, it really doesn't do a whole lot for me to announce what it takes to do some things here, which I think, if it was in writing and people read it, perhaps it would be helpful to them. So I still have all the stuff from last month and this month, which was a little less active. Actually, I think the only thing we talked about was the EPA is going to be banning all pesticides and everything that affects anything that we eat. And I don't know what those pesticides are, but it's going along this to those. And this past week, I had another WRCO meeting. Seems like I'm having. And this past week, I had another WRCA meeting. Seems like I'm having two a month right now, but there, I always enjoy going to them. Today we met for the Veterans Day meeting and it's well, well, it's in good hands. Vicki's the chair of that and I'm just the window dressing on that committee. The ladies, they really do an excellent job of putting it together. So it's a pleasure to serve on that. And one last comment, although it's really not a city function, but Matt touched on it a little bit, the Oktoberfest that we had this past Saturday night. I had the opportunity of selling popcorn and soft drinks, which was a very important job. But it was, it was so well attended and we mentioned it today, I say, we, once again, at the Veterans meeting, just how many young people were there, which is, the population is turning over in Canyon Lake. There was an awful lot of strollers being pushed around at that meeting, so at that function. And with that, I'll conclude my comments, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Jordan. Councilmember Haggerty?
Very briefly, I attended the budget meeting and then the regular meeting at Riverside Transit Agency. It's not terribly exciting unless you're there every week. I get excited about dumb things like new equipment and the efficiency with which they run the agency is just blows my mind. They have a huge event once a year. It's a rodeo and they drive buses through course. And the man, the driver from Riverside won the national rodeo bus thing last year and it's coming up soon. I haven't been. Yeah, I mean, they tell me it's very exciting and I haven't been and I'm planning on going this year. But they're doing a lot of things, repairing and adding on to bus stops around the area. They cut their fuel efficiency to an incredibly low amount. It's so well-run. It's just, it's amazing how well-run this whole agency is.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Green?
Thank you. It's been an interesting month. We've had a lot of meetings that were sort of planned and unplanned, but just a reminder though, this is going to be a very difficult flu season. CDC and all those who are in the medical field are saying those who are at risk, those who probably all should receive unless you have some sensitivity to it, the vaccine for the flu. It's currently being distributed and it looks like they might be on target this year. Last year, the vaccine that they made didn't quite hit the mark. But they say this year, this flu is going to be as, as worse, one of our worst flu seasons we've had in a while. So just that. Attended, went to the league, voted for the city. I was the league delegate for our city anyway. That was quite interesting. Friday afternoon, waiting in Long Beach and then trying to drive down 91. It's always fun. The league had a lot of interesting things. I was able to take two mandatory classes for council members that you receive certification from the state. So that helps. RCA has acquired now with their purchases over 56,000 acres, head towards their goal. This is their annual report, which if you don't know what the RCA, they're trying to ensure that the habitat that we have for everything that lives in this county other than humans has a safe place and a passageway so that they don't end up becoming part of the food chain or extinct. So they have developed corridors that are established throughout the county to identify these certain animals and their habitats. And it's a very, our county is one of the leading counties in the nation for this process. And because of that, we're rewarded very nicely with grant money. So that always helps when you're purchasing land. Last one I have is, of course, I'm part of the emergency preparedness. We have procured a grant for our CERT training and we will be doing CERT in the next couple of months. We are nailing that down tomorrow night and we'll set the date. We'll put it out to all of our citizens first here at Canyon Lake. And those, if we do not get a fill with those who want to take the class, then we will extend it to our partner cities around us and that's how we fill the class so the instructor gets a full load. One of the things we are talking about is the drone technology. I don't know if you guys have checked it, but drones are everywhere now. And if you look, if you look in the emergency management field, drones are starting to be used for intelligence gathering, aerial surveillance, a whole bunch of other things that could be used in a disaster situation. So that's one of the things we looked at. And with that, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of my meetings are coming up. Animal Friends is coming up. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. I just was informed that there's a power outage that's affecting the country club, excuse me, the lodge and over at Skylane. So I think maybe a portion of it over Canyon Road 2 as well. Apparently a transformer blew out over by the church office rail and it's affected several areas. So I just kind of wanted to pass that along that I contacted the POA. It looks like they're already aware of it and they're trying to figure out the situation and how to sort of handle the situation. I just kind of wanted to pass that along.
Mike, one question, because I live in Laid House, which is a block up from the lodge. Is that area?
I, I, I don't know any more than what they said was the lodge was affected, the country club is affected and Skylane too as well.
And what about the gates? Mike, did it say anything about the gates?
They did not say anything about the gates.
Are the signals working?
Again, yeah, they didn't, they didn't give you much information. That's the only thing that was made aware of.
We need to find out about the signal at Skylane at the, at the country club.
The lights aren't working. Signals are working from what they said. So it seems like it's a sporadic outage that's affecting certain areas, but I'm not aware as, they didn't give you much information as to what streets were affected inside the gates.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks. Heads up when you're, when you're leaving here. Okay, the POA and city golf tournament is coming up next weekend. Nobody was here. I'm sure that they're out practicing and getting ready for it, but it's the 6th and then the 7th is the conclusion. So anybody who hasn't signed up, they're, they're open to any more. I know there's a flyer around here somewhere, but we have been promoting that. The, you mentioned the WCE? WCE. Mayor Protem and I are going to be meeting with Southern California Edison to also talk about that issue. Just to get a little, little bit more clear than mud kind of situation. It's crazy all over. I get a lot of. Yeah, yeah. Maybe together we can, we can get this thing figured out. I want to mention that the alum treatments, once again, it was a successful alum treatment. It was beautifully done. It was, it was textbook. They've got it down to a, no pun intended, they've got it down to a science. So it was, it was excellent. And let's see. Wow. The Veterans Day is coming up faster than we expect as always. We added several new volunteers to our committee today. I know that we'll have more in the next one. Jordan's right, the team is awesome that is putting this together and the person that always hides in the back, special nod to him, Mike Borha, is, it wouldn't be coming off, stop that, it wouldn't be coming off nearly as well if we didn't have him. We met, let's go back to this last couple of weeks, just before the race to the White House, Mayor Protem and I met with, and Jack Wong, who was in attendance also, met with Congressman Calvert's chief of staff and also several key members of the BLM to discuss what it takes to go forward with this. We have regular meetings that we'll be having to go further with this. Congressman Calvert is, is a really good fan to have in our, in our corner and he's, he's been very good for our city and he actually loves Canyon Lake. And that kind of segues into, I'll give you just a really brief rundown because we are running out of time, but the race to Washington was amazing, exhausting and extremely fruitful for Canyon Lake. What came out of that, what I, what I went into was expecting to have them tell us what, what we have to do to kind of fit what they have for us. What I left with was a continued push and I continued today, two weeks later, of what can we do for you? And if you just say, oh, you know, I'll get in contact, when, when will you be calling? When, when can we do this for you? The push from this administration is to help local governments and it has been reiterated over and over again. We were given a list of contacts. I reached out today because I had a question about something that the second lady spoke about. There's a veterans program that I'm interested in. Turns out there's many. And they're going to be sending us as much information as I could possibly ask for and more. So this, it was not, it was both, it was quite different than what I expected. I knew that I was going and learning about the different programs that were available to cities and cities like us and big cities, little cities. Amazingly, there were cities that were there who were smaller than us. I mean, really smaller than us. And so that was, that was enlightening. But what I didn't expect, like I said, was the forceful handshake of we're here for you. You have a friend in the White House. It was told to me over and over again Canyon Lake has a friend here in DC and it's been proven out in the last couple of weeks. So I expect great things. We do indeed, this small, little bit of funding that we get from the grants, from the CDVG grants, that's just the tip of the iceberg. There are, there's help from FEMA, there's help from HUD, there's help from, from EDA. There are so many venues and if there's a program out there that, if they don't have a program that suits us, let's say we, let's say we want to paint every curb pink and there's no program for that. They are willing to create pilot programs that they know will be successful so that perhaps we could put that in play, that we want Canyon Lake wants their curves pink, so let's see what we can do about a pilot program. It's just, it was an amazing thing, exhausting. I had maybe, I don't know, a few hours and I was able to actually see anything outside the rooms of the meetings and conferences, but it was awesome for Canyon Lake. I was honored to be there. It was, it was just an amazing trip and so much better for us than I ever expected it to be and just continues on. So when I say I have a phone number of a person that I can talk to about that issue, I'm not kidding. I have a phone number and she'll take my call. So we're in good shape. And with that, that's all I have. Our next regular meeting will be November 7th at 6:30. That will be the day after the final blow and we are adjourned. It is 8:40 PM. Thank you.